Good morning. Welcome to the 18th Day of February 2020, Weber County Commission. My name is Gage Fror. Welcome everybody here in person and online. To my right, Commissioner Harvey, and to my left, Commissioner Jenkins. Appreciate everybody's attendance this morning. I don't see Pastor Malinak with us, but Scott Park has agreed to do our invocation, Pledge of Allegiance by Fatima. And then the thought of the day, Commissioner Jenkins. Scott?
Our dear Heavenly Father, we are so very grateful for this chance that we have now to meet together to discuss civic matters that affect the community. We are so very grateful to live in a state and in a nation that gives us these freedoms. We are mindful of those who are around the world who do not have the freedoms that we enjoy, and we pray for them that according to thy will, that democracy and freedom may spread throughout the world. We are grateful for the local areas that we are able to be in and are mindful of the business that we have now, and pray that thou will help us that we may conduct this business in accordance with thy will and in accordance with those values which we hold. And we pray for this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to thy United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we just finished President's Day, and my recollection is originally it was Lincoln-Washington Day. And it's when we, you know, I've been watching that. I get on the history channels, and I've been watching this special that talks about Washington and what a special guy he was, and the history of our country, and it just gives you a lot to be appreciative of. The country we live in and the people who came before us, and what a special guy some of these guys were. But also talked about the side when he was, before he was a general, when he was lieutenant colonel and the colonel and the issues he had and problems he had, and was talking about the French-Indien War and how really he was one of the main people who started that war. And so Washington had his issues too. He was a normal, everyday person, just like we all are. It's what we do in our life that really counts. And I'm grateful to be here and be able to be a commissioner with you two and be involved in the county with all the wonderful employees we have. This is a wonderful experience I'm having right now, and I'm just eating it up every day. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Jenkins. We'd second that. Absolutely. Okay, let's go to public comment. Anyone that is here to address the commission, now's the time to be heard. I don't see anybody here that's not on the agenda, so we're going to move forward to our presentations. And we'll start first with controls over the ACH payments. Scott Park, Jason Horn, and we'll hear from you now. I think this is a discussion item that was brought up last week. We had some questions on, Commissioner Jenkins.
It is.
If my memory serves me right, Jason, the time's yours.
Yeah, that's correct. We're just going to take a few minutes and provide a little clarification. I will say that last week, Commissioner Harvey's delivery of the P-card rules and regulations with his specific departmental examples was actually spot-on. So, but I will take just a few minutes and add several additional bullet points, just for clarification. So the program, as it pertains to purchasing cards, is not intended to avoid or bypass appropriate purchasing, procurement, or payment procedures. Rather, the program complements the existing processes available. New users, anytime someone is going to obtain a purchasing card within a department, new users must attend a P-card training before receiving his or her card. Occasionally, departments will receive a refresher training, the actual department in its entirety, when an audit result recommends that, that that happens. P-card logs are audited every four months or three times a year, and they must be completed and signed off, these logs must be completed and signed off by a supervisor every single month. To coincide with the procurement ordinance, single transactions are limited to $2,000 or less, with average monthly credit limits at $2,500. And where Commissioner Jenkins had mentioned multiple purchases in the amount of between $14,000 and $16,000 last month, those purchases were actually made by the purchasing department, both Matt and my purchasing cards, and they were made for departments within the county where a special circumstance existed. So in this situation, a vendor was not willing to or able to provide terms to the county, or, I just lost my train of thought here. Oh, there we go. Or there was an unexpected need, and a credit card was there to expedite the process. So even with said purchases, strict adherence to the purchasing ordinance was followed. Additional quotes on purchases exceeding $2,000 were received before these higher-dollar purchases were made. And I'll just reiterate the fact that the two P-cards within the purchasing department are the only cards within the county with the higher transaction and monthly limits. Not even the commissioners have high roller cards, if you will.
That don't work very well, so.
In certain instances where someone is responsible for a department's travel and/or conference training purchases, limits are raised temporarily until the travel or registrations are complete, and then lowered to the appropriate limits with prior authorization obtained from a supervisor, manager, department head, et cetera. So Deputy Jensen out at the sheriff's office, he does this from time to time where he registers the deputies for certain conferences and so forth. Sheriff Arben is always on the phone or an email to authorize raising that limit to make those purchases, and then when that's completed, I'll take his limit back down to where it needs to be. So that's what I have from the purchasing department side of things. Scott will talk for just a few minutes, and then we can answer questions.
Great, thank you. Scott, go ahead.
So on the audit side of things, I wanted to just give you a brief overview of how that process works. So the clerk auditor's office will audit every single P-card statement during, that's ever made. So what we do is, three times a year, we go out and we grab all the statements since the last time we've audited, and we will look at every single statement to ensure that it was completed, it was signed off by its supervisor, and we scan every transaction to make sure there's nothing that jumps out as being wrong. Then based off of the risk of the individual P-card holder, we will audit a sample of their individual transactions. So we have a low risk, moderate risk, and high risk. If you're low risk, we're going to audit between 10% and 20% of your individual transactions, trace it back, make sure you have a receipt, make sure if it was a meal, it was appropriately documented, all procurement was followed. If you're a moderate risk, we do that same thing, except we look at every other transaction, so 50% of your transactions. And if you're high risk, we look at every transaction. So in the county, right now, there are 17, there were, there's 130 statements times 12, so about 1,700 statements per year. When we, I look back through our last audit cycle, 28 of those, or about 2%, were not signed by supervisors. We had 38 individual transactions where we didn't allocate taxes correctly, that's out of about 14,000 transactions. We had insufficient support on 12 of them, we had transaction splittings on 11, we had transactions paid through P-cards and through accounts payable in three instances. So these are actually really, really small error rates when you consider the volume of transactions that go through our purchasing card. So we, we feel like we have a very good understanding and handle on those P-card transactions, and we can either prevent or detect errors on a timely basis. So unless you have any specific questions on that process?
Questions for Scott or Jason? Commissioner Jenkins?
Yeah, you talked about high risk. Am I high risk? Because I can't get that dang card turned on. I think it's on now, but I refuse to use it because every time I've tried, it hasn't worked.
There are currently three individuals in the county that are high risk, there are five individuals that are moderate risk, and there are 122 that are low risk, and I did not bring any specific names with me.
So three at high risk. Hell, I think that's those three right up there.
That's the reason they turned ours off.
That's right. All right, Scott, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Harvey?
I absolutely will, and if we are the ones at high risk, I'm glad for it. I'm happy to be audited all the time, which takes me to my next statement.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair. You know, Mr. Hatch, I remember, well, I remember back from Marcia Owen, when Marcia Owen was the purchasing agent here back in the 90s. And in fact, Jennifer Graham used to work for Marcia in 94 when I came here, and, but I remember Annette, and I remember Brianna, and then I remember Jason, and I'm going to tell you, I love what's happening in our purchase department. Three years ago, when I came here, we used to have the auditor, Roger, used to work for the commission, and we've since moved that back to its appropriate place underneath the clerk auditor. Those are, we have better guidelines, and we're held to a little higher standard now as a commission. I'm very comfortable with what's happening there. I compliment you, Ricky, and your staff, what's happening there. I recognize the importance of a separation. I'm glad that that's happening between these two exactly right here. You just heard the margin of error from Mr. Park, and we have a check and balance system that's not just good, but it's also, it's also part of good accounting practices. That's why we receive such high marks. And Ricky, I would just, my point today is to just compliment you, and I know you wouldn't get all those accolades if the things weren't running correctly. This just solidifies what, you know, I'm not very good at articulating a lot of things, but I knew it was, I knew it was right, and a lot of time it just comes from just learning and being here for a while. And I will say, I think the only reason my card works is because I was one of the first guys that had a card, and I've had my share of times where it didn't work, didn't work, didn't work, and you use your own, and then you submit, we have a process for that if we have to, and it all works out fine. I really love the process by which the county's being, taking care of the taxpayer funds and being really critical with it, almost as if we're treating each, many of them as like the widow's mite, so to speak. That's what I have to say about that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Jenkins?
All I want to do is tell you, I question this because it's my job to oversee it. I have oversight. And I appreciate your answers, I appreciate your follow-through, and the fact that you give me comfort that we're taking care of the public funds appropriately. So thank you very much. I appreciate you both.
We appreciate the question, we appreciate that you're looking.
I want to, may I, one more thing? This is no means. My comments last weekend today are no means to be critical at all of Commissioner Jenkins. I want that to be specifically pointed out. I love the fact that he's very detailed as far as that goes. That happens out here in the open, but it also really happens behind closed doors. It's refreshing to me, it's helped me to be, I think, better in my stewardship, not just at the county, but at home. He's been a good teacher, and Gage is the same way. This is really good. I'm really happy with what you have, what we've got here, it's just great. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments, and I, gentlemen, I just want to tell you, I appreciate your efforts very much. You know, these questions are healthy. These questions are not meant personal or for anybody to get concerned about. It's a healthy dialogue to have anytime you have government. I can tell you, I'm very pleased with the performance that I see in the county on financial controls, cost accounting, what the auditing, I think that you guys have got it nailed down, quite frankly, and I just appreciate what you do. But again, these discussions are healthy to take place so that this public knows that we are watching those dollars, because as Commissioner Jenkins said, that is our job. And so in order for us to do our job, we have to have that comfort level, the cost accounting, financial controls are in place. My background, I can tell you from my experience, they're very much in control. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you for that presentation. Now, we are, have an honored guest with us?
Honored.
Honored, yeah. I don't know how we deserve this honor, but somehow we did. Anyway, we have from the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources, and talking about payment in lieu of taxes checks, and we have a presenter, Mr. Ben Nadolsky, Northern Regional Office Supervisor, recently appointed. And also, for those that don't or aren't aware, he's an Ogden City Councilperson, and I actually have asked Ben to, that I wanted him to come and talk about Ogden City, what's going on there. If you want to take a second after that presentation, I think that that's a healthy dialogue to have. Ogden City and Weber County obviously have a lot of common goals, what is good for Ogden, it's good for Weber, and vice versa. And I think it's healthy to have that discussion, Ben, but whatever you'd like to do, the time's yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Congrats on your new assignment as well.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Appreciate being here, Mr. Chair, and thank you commissioners for the opportunity. But I'm Ben Nadolsky with the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources. My purpose for being here are multifold, as we just learned. So I'll cover my pad when we get to the final question.
We'll get you an Ogden City shirt.
So I am first and foremost here to introduce to you the, our annual payment in lieu of taxes check. I have a check for you here for the amount of $9,124.35. That's a very specific amount, consistent with the conversation you just had. It's important to account for every penny and every dollar as stewards of the public dollar. So I also want to take this opportunity, I know all three of you from past dealings and also on a personal level, but I'm taking this opportunity to present checks and also to introduce myself to each of the county commissions. I am recently appointed as Northern Region Supervisor. I think maybe two days into my tenure, if that, Commissioner Fror had passed a constituent on to me for some questions about hunting around Piney Reservoir. So I do want you guys to know that if there's anything that you need, wildlife-related, kind of consistent with Commissioner Jenkins' thought of the day, you know, we're judged by the way that we live our lives, and like you guys and like everybody behind the dais and many in the crowd, we do believe, and I do believe personally, but also professionally in serving others. And that's a goal and a value that our agency actually takes very seriously, and we try and emphasize each and every day. And part of that is to take some of those constituent inquiries that you may have, and recognize that we have a shared constituency that we represent. The people that you guys represent as elected officials are people that we represent in the stewardship of wildlife resources and the monies that hunters and anglers provide for us to do that. So we're happy to take any questions you guys might encounter that you don't have an answer to, but also as stewards of shared lands within your county, if you guys run into any issues or conflicts, much like we had a few months ago, or maybe five or six months ago now, where you had some questions about our Middle Fork Wildlife Management Area, we're happy to come and help address those and be good neighbors. So I'm happy to take whatever wildlife-related questions you have, but before we do that, I'll, if it's okay to...
Sure, go ahead. Wow, okay, we got a check here. So, great, nice. Appreciate that. And the check, and the amount of, I'll just make sure that goes on public, $9,124.35.
That's correct. And just like you guys talked about your checks and balances and accounting, there's a form there that I need a signature for so I can take it back and show that I did deliver it and I didn't cash it for myself.
You know, Commissioner Fror, may I?
Go ahead.
You know, Ben, number one, I want to congratulate you on your new appointment. That's way good. I've known you, I think, the entire time I was in the legislature, and you're a wonderful individual, and so I appreciate all you've done. Number two, it's obvious that we don't have much pilt land in Weber County, very little. And third, there is one thing that we have here that most people don't understand. We have a fair amount of big game hunting that takes place in this county. You know, a major portion of desert land and livestock up there is in our county. Adjacent to that is three very large pieces of property that's been recently combined into a great big CWMU on top. I think that's a 20,000-acre CWMU now, between the three pieces. And I've hunted that many times and taken two very nice animals out of there, and we have some exceptional big game hunting at the very top of Weber County, and most people don't understand that. You know, Monte Cristo, over the years, has kind of been trashed in hunting. We've hunted the thing to death. And with these properties coming back, Monte Cristo's turned into a little bit of a gem again. It's been my whole life growing up, it wasn't. And you know, with the return of desert land and livestock, that started it, that's kind of the seed, and then these other large parcels up there on top that have turned into a great big CWMU, it's really turned that whole area into some really good large game hunting now that we haven't had in years. And so I'm just telling you, we should be very grateful for those permits and what's happened, and we're fortunate to be in a position now where we've got this kind of hunting in the county. It's, we're, I'm a little surprised, frankly, that it's back to this quality. I didn't think I'd ever see it come back, but it has.
So part of the way that we can manage quality hunting is through quality partnerships and quality stewardship, both on private and on public lands. So the CWMU program that the commissioner just mentioned is the Cooperative Wildlife Management Unit program, and that's a way that we are able to enroll private lands, large tracts of private lands, into a cooperative wildlife management unit that allows for private hunting and public hunters to participate. And it opens up, opens up opportunities for public hunters to go into private lands that they normally wouldn't have access to, but it also incentivizes private landowners to manage their lands for the benefit of wildlife. And so we see the CWMU as one tool that allows us to manage our wildlife in a world-class way. And one opportunity that you didn't mention, but I know that you're aware of, is we have world-class mountain goat viewing and once-in-a-lifetime hunting opportunities. That's world-class mountain goats at the tops of these mountains. And every now and again, you get a good look at them from town even, when they come down low.
Yeah, if you, if you take that trail that goes from Weaver County over to Cache County, up there on the backside of Wilder Peak, you can get a look at those sheep, especially in the early spring and late fall, and it's amazing. Well, I know people that sit at their homes with these high-pass scopes and sit up there and look at those sheep on the, on the face of those mountains.
I live on the east bench of Ogden, and I chose my seat at the dinner table so that I could see the mountain goats while eating dinner. Maybe that doesn't surprise you.
There you go.
Do you have my question on that?
Yeah.
You chose your seat, but do you have permission to sit at that seat?
Well, I sit when permission's granted, I leave when permission's granted. I'm no different than you are, Commissioner.
Janie, I'm just doing a shout-out to...
To Janie, my wife, Janie. Yeah. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. I'll stick around in case there's any questions on your county.
Yeah, do you want this back, Ben?
I do, thank you very much.
I have that, and yeah, and I would agree with what's been said, the DWR does a great job, and they've done a great job with the big game, as Commissioner Jenkins has highlighted. But you know, Ogden Valley has unique perspective for some waterfowl fisheries. You know, DWR has some people on their staff that are some of the best in the United States on fisheries, on the, on the water, on the rivers, and it's just another opportunity for our residents in Weber County to go out and enjoy the assets we have here. In addition to everything we always talk about, which is the conference center and the rodeo grounds and what we have, it's our outdoor recreation that allows us to continue that, and it's, and again, that doesn't come by accident, that comes by management. And it's, it's not the Monte Cristo that we saw 25 years ago that was all basically shot out.
Yeah.
And so the management allows us to continue that for the next generation that has the ability to experience those family experiences, whether that be fishing, hunting, small game, big game, that I think is so critical to our lifestyle here in the West, and especially Weber County. So you guys do a great job.
Thank you very much. You're definitely speaking our, our language when you talk about the values of hunting and fishing.
Commissioner, I would like to mention one thing. So in 1968, I was a senior in high school, you know that, because you was a sophomore.
I remember, yeah, you were from Plain City.
So 1968...
Hold on, was the country established?
It was.
Okay.
But I remember, the reason I remember, that was the first year that they had a public season for elk in the state of Utah, 1968. And I remember, I had two friends, and we decided we was going to go elk hunting. And everybody kind of laughed about that and said, "Well, how are you going to do that?" And we said, "Well, we're just going to go buy a tag and go up there." And I remember we were sitting up at, up at the gas station, I was listening to some guys talking, and they were talking about Strawberry Valley up on Monte Cristo. And we thought, "Well, those guys are pretty smart, they've been up there looking around, they know what they're doing." So we went up there, well, it was Roy East and Brent Weston went with me, you know them guys. And so we decided to go up there, and that, one of the guys, Roy's dad went with us, and that next morning, we got up, and we didn't have any idea where we were going, and we drove down the road, and this guy in front of us was in a Jeep, and he drove up this hillside, and we thought, "Well, he knows where he's going, let's follow him." So we drove up that hillside too. When we got to the top, he went right and we went left. Well, at the end of the day, when it was all over with, we had a six-point bull and a five-point bull down. Yeah, and that was the first public hunting season in the state of Utah, and we did that right up on top of Monte Cristo out there. And that's hard to believe. I remember when we brought those home, my neighbor come over and he says, "I've been wanting to draw," he said, "I put in for elk," you know, we had very few elk back then, and he says, "I've never been able to draw," and he says, "I've never gotten elk," and he says, "Here, you two kids didn't know what you're even doing, you go out and shoot something like that." He says, "That's not right." Anyway, I tell you, it is good.
That's a great story.
Yep.
I remember those days.
Commissioner, I'm paid by the hour, if you want me to stand here while you guys share hunting stories, I'm happy to do that. Just one more parting comment, because you made the mention of our...
Yeah, go ahead.
Aquatics programs and our waterfowl program. It was you, Commissioner Fror, as Representative Fror, who honored one of our fisheries biologists on the floor of the House.
One of the best in the country.
One of the best in the nation, Chris Penny, he's just, he's housed right here down the street in our Ogden office. He's literally top-notch fisheries biologist across the country, has been honored for that. And we have a whole team of Chris Pennys that do quiet work in our office and in the field, and, and they just do amazing things every day, and we just wouldn't be what we are as communities, but as an agency, without the commitment of people like that. And we have the same thing out in our marshes that are often forgotten because they're so far away, but we have world-class waterfowl hunting here. We have people that fly from all over the world into the airports of Brigham City and Ogden to hunt these wetland areas, and that's something that's often forgotten. But also, the Great Salt Lake is home to a thriving economic opportunity with the brine shrimp industry, very often forgotten as well, but that's managed by our offices as well. So we have a very broad number of things and issues and resources that we manage, but one thing is true, we manage for people. So again, I'll just leave it with you guys, that if you have any issues that anybody brings to you, please feel free to pass them along to me, and I'll make sure that we follow up on them.
Appreciate that, we appreciate the communication being open, because when those issues come up, it's nice to have an answer as quickly as possible, because it's usually when those issues come up on hunting or boundaries, you know, people like answers as quickly as possible.
Yep, there's usually a lot of passion, so answers help a lot.
Yeah, we know it very much. Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, additional comments before we move on?
Great. Yeah, you know, I can't resist this. Yeah, well, we've talked about the big game hunting, but Ben mentioned that, you know, when you talk about the hunting out west in our marshes, we have some of the best waterfowl hunting in the country. You know, we've got wetlands that are on the north end of the lake, and between the Bear River Bird Refuge and the Harold Crane and all the private properties out there, we've got tremendous. And you know, it used to be that you had to have a lot of money and one of the big old airboats to go out there, but with these new boats they've developed, with these little mud motors on them. Yeah, they are just, now a normal person can get into some of that pretty cheap, and it's, we just have some tremendous hunting here. Plus, the geese, you know, we used to have a lot of geese that came through, but we have a lot of geese at winter here now, you know, and our goose hunting's really good too. So I'm telling you, we, you want to hunt, all you got to do is get off your dead butt and go do it, because we got the opportunities here.
Very true words, yep. We like, we like that, every night I see the geese, and I don't know why they live in the valley, I mean, there's got to be warmer down here, but we've got a pretty good flock of geese that pretty much stay in the valley now. And I don't, of course, I don't think anybody shoots at them too much, but they're welcome to be there. So anyway... So anyway, thank you very much, Ben. Let's move on to our consent items. And that would be Agenda G. I'm gonna start with G1, request for approval of warrants. And I don't have, let me see if we got the amounts on those. Let me pull this next sheet out. Warrants, number 2412 through 2424, and 447168 through 447380, and the amount of $489,861.91. G2, request for approval of purchase orders, the amount of $77,457.26.
So Mr. Chair, I question the warrants you just read.
Okay.
Those are not the numbers of the warrants I've got.
Uh, let me double-check.
Oh, I'm wrong here, I'm sorry. I got on the wrong page.
That was on my note here.
You're correct. I'm wrong, and you, you are correct.
Correct, I think.
Yep.
Yep, those look like right off the warrant report here, Commissioner Jenkins.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, not a problem. Number three, request for approval of minutes for the meeting dated February 11th, 2020. Four, request for approval of new business licenses. Five, requests from the Weaver County Tax Review Committee for approval of refunding taxes in the amount of $319.65 for parcel number 030260008 toward an error in calculation of square footage. Six, requests from the Weaver County Clerk Auditor Elections Office for approval of 2020 presidential primary election primary canvas. Seven, request for approval of a contract by and between Weaver County and the Utah Division of Wildlife Resources to hold for 2020 RAC meeting in the Weaver County, in the Weaver Center, excuse me. So that's the consent items. Questions, Commissioners?
None. I do have one question, if I could.
Go ahead.
Ricky, the canvas that came out, or the, the, and I just dropped my ballot, but most people are asking questions, okay, we got a ballot in the mail for only presidential elections for Republican, I saw. Can you just explain that so it's on camera, so people know that?
Absolutely. So with Utah being a voter's choice state, that means that every active voter is mailed a ballot. In November, that's easy. Every voter gets the ballot that's assigned to them regardless of which party they belong to. However, for primary elections, it's a little bit harder, because you can only vote one party in the primary election. You can either vote Democrat or Republican in the presidential case, because they're the only two that have, have primaries. That's easy if you're a registered Democrat or a registered Republican. We just mail you the ballot of the party that you belong to. The challenge is, if you're unaffiliated, what ballot should we mail to you? Or should we mail both? What the county clerks in Utah have chosen to do in conjunction, after working with Lieutenant Governor's Office, is to basically do what we would do if you were to come in person to a polling place on Election Day and say, I would like to vote. At that point, the poll worker would say, I show that you are unaffiliated, you have a couple of options. You can, I can give you a Democratic ballot, or I can give you a Democratic ballot and have you join the Democratic Party, or I can give you a Republican ballot and have you join the Republican Party. Those are the three options that are available. So we did that in the form of a letter. So we mailed out early in January to about 41,000 unaffiliated voters in the, in the county. And we said, you have, if you do, if you choose to do nothing, you won't receive a ballot. However, here are your options. You can choose to join the Republican Party, and we'll send you a Republican ballot. You can choose a Democratic ballot, and you can also affiliate with the Democratic Party if you want to, that one's not option, not required. So we provide them with, with those options, and we had several thousand people reply requesting. We also have had a fair number of people who are registered as Republicans who have requested Democratic ballots. So we go in and we spoil the Republican ballot that we sent to them, and mail them a Democratic presidential ballot. And that's totally within the laws of the state, as well as the parties, and how they, how they run the elections. The decision, the rules on who can vote in particular primary elections are set by the parties and not by the state. So that's, we, we follow those rules within the general election guidelines. Is that kind of what you were thinking about?
I was, that's exactly. Just so that it was an explanation, so people could, could hear.
And my final recommendation would be, please make sure if, if you are unaffiliated and haven't received the ballot yet or haven't responded, it's not too late. Best to do, to do it now than to do it on Election Day, or right before Election Day. Do it now so we can mail you a ballot.
Great, thank you. Ricky, a question for you. So if a Republican that received a Republican ballot, obviously, calls and said, I wanna have a Democratic ballot, you only gonna count one of those ballots, correct?
That's correct. If, if the Republican ballot has not been returned or submitted, then we go in and we spoil that ballot in our system and mail out a new one. And then, but if the, if the voter has already returned the Republican ballot, we could send the Democratic ballot, but if that were to come back in, we would immediately know that that voter had already voted.
Right. So the question is, they'll, they'll only get to vote in one of the two primary, either Republican or Democrat?
That's correct.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners?
No questions, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Ricky, let's have, before, let's have him give us a little more info on the warrants.
For our purchase orders, we issued 15 purchase orders for $77,000. Just under half of that amount, or $35,000, was for the conference center. And that will go almost exclusively to building maintenance, but also for the music for the Valentine's Day dance, which happened last week. 25% of that amount, or $19,000, was for the library, and that was primarily for building maintenance supplies, but also for audiovisual materials. As far as checks, we issued 204 checks this week for $1.4 million. A third of that amount, or $438,000, was for the transfer station for disposal fees. 14%, we had a couple items at 14%. Those were both our monthly contributions to the paramedic services and Weaver Human Services. 10%, or $136,000, was paid for our public defender services. And then 7%, or $93,000, was for the jail, and that went towards medical and mental health services for inmates, as well as food and utilities.
Great. Questions, Commissioners? If not, entertain a motion.
Very good. I am ready to make a motion, but I do wanna make a comment. If you've noticed, the last few months, our public defender fees are going up. It was only about four or six weeks ago that we had nine on there. And you know, this is, they're, you can see, they're starting to build to this case that we have coming through. Anyway, it costs, it costs to operate this system, there's no question about it. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent items.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Harvey. Place a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Let's move to our action items. Agenda items H1, request for approval of a contract buying between Weaver County and Freedom Riders for approval to hold the therapeutic riding for special needs children in 2020. Mr. Olson.
Good morning, Commissioners. This contract is between us and the Freedom Riders. The Freedom Riders have been with us, I don't know, do you have a start year? Do you remember that? So a while.
92.
They've been with us a while. And so with, with some changes to the way we do our hourly riding, we just needed to make it a, a contract, but we still wanted to, to have them benefit in our services, our riding arena, and, and continue their program. So just discounted rates for them.
Great. Comments, Commissioners?
This is, what is Freedom Riders? Let me just explain this. This is one of my favorite contracts of the year. We don't make hardly much on it, but let me tell you what they do. This is a group of volunteers who bring horses who have been, for lack of a better term, certified, qualified, trained to do a certain thing. And what the group does is they bring in a ramp, and they take handicapped kids, very few adults, but they're mainly children who are wheelchair-bound, who have a great amount of disability, some of them. And they roll them up, and then they put them on the back of a horse. And then they lead them around inside the riding arena, so it's a, it's somewhat controlled, the weather and the environment, so they're not getting rained on or baked in the sun. And that gentle swaying of the horse going back and forth helps, in some cases, strengthen the lower muscles in their back, but it does wonders for their... It does wonders for them up here. And it's a great program. Nobody gets paid, and this is a way that we, as a county, participate. It used to be through the McCady Foundation, of helping just kids that, boy, look forward to a particular time of year, a few times, to be able to get on the back of a horse and have something different to do. And so I'm very, very much in favor of this, and this is something I'm glad to see, we as a county, a program that we somewhat, we take care of through, through this, giving them a deal out here at the, at the Golden Spike. So with that, I'd make a motion, if you're ready to accept that, Mr. Chair.
I'm ready. Go ahead.
Hold on, I'd like to comment on this.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jenkins.
Well, so Duncan, was there an interruption in this contract? Because I had somebody come to me last week and say that the Freedom Riders had been booted out of the conference, or out of the Golden Spike Arena, and they'd, they'd gone to their arena. And he says, I'm a little surprised by that.
I don't think that it was disrupted. The, the process was, it used to be that we funneled them through our hourly program to make sure that we're upfront and transparent with what we're doing. It needed to come to commission, because we were, we were discounting the rates. And so if there was some, it was because we hadn't got it in front of you guys yet, we're wanting them back.
Okay.
To my knowledge, I, I didn't know that they were.
So yeah, but they're, as of right now today, they're not there.
They don't go in the, they don't go in the shoulder. They've never, they've always gone April, May through about the August, September time. That's the only time they've ever gone in the 30-plus years I've been associated.
Well, right now, this winter, they're out doing it at somebody else's place.
Well, and I would just say to that, if there was a winter program, it was never done at the Golden Spike Event Center.
I'll do some research, though, because.
Yeah, because I agree with you, I want them there.
If, if they do have a winter program. Well, you know, we have very limited time during the winter months because of our preferred program that we have, but more than willing to look into that for you.
Well, I was told specifically that we booted them out. And I told them, I said, I just can't hardly imagine that.
I don't.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll figure out and let you know.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Could you check into that for us, Duncan?
Absolutely.
You know where that, if I'd, I'm gonna, if I can get that information, I'd like to make a call on that, because that, where this is in my portfolio, I'd like to understand this better. I've got a lot of information on that.
I appreciate that. And I'm somewhat familiar with the Freedom Riders. A good friend of mine passed on a little while ago, Mr. Larry Castings, you're probably aware of, was heavily involved with the Freedom Riders. And I tell you, just to see the benefit that these kids and sometimes the adults receive from being on the back of a horse, you know, made their day, if not, if not longer. And that's anything we can do to improve quality of life for those, for those folks, we should do that as a county. So I, I fully support this. And I think Commissioner Harvey made the motion.
I'll make that motion formally to approve the contract buying between Weaver County for the Freedom Riders for 2020. I'll second.
And Commissioner Jenkins, second. Place a motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Duncan.
Thank you, I'll get back with you.
If you let us know. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Two, request for approval of a contract buying between Weaver County and the following individuals for the production of the 2020 Kids Act Up Theater camp and production of Shrek Jr. That would be Jed Broberg, director, Peyton Davis, music director, and Sarah Heiner, choreographer. And Jennifer is gonna present that for us? Go ahead, Jennifer.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, Cassie's at a workshop today, so her and I coordinated to have me present. This is just for three of the positions to put on our Kids Act Up, which is part of our Ogden Musical Theater program. This year, the kids are gonna be doing Shrek Jr. And that is typically, that's held in mid-June through the end of June, two weeks that the kids come. So just looking for approval of those three independent contractor agreements.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Commissioners, you're familiar with the Kids Act Up, it's great. It's big-level plays at our historic Piers Egyptian Theater with, involving youth. And so this is a great, great camp for them. And with that, Mr. Chair, when you're ready, I'll make a motion.
I'm ready.
Make a motion that we approve these contracts between the three individuals as previously prevented between Weaver County and those three for Shrek Jr.
Thank you for that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Jenkins has a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Jennifer, it looks like you're still on, so stay there. Request for approval of the first reading of ordinance of the county commissioners of Weaver County amending certain fees to the Weaver County Fee Ordinance. Jennifer, if you could explain that to us.
Okay, so this is just kind of a housekeeping. We like to try to review the fees annually, sometimes it's every other year, to make any adjustments. And this is just Duncan, Olson, and his staff have gone through, and these are their recommendations for the fee structure.
Thank you. Commissioners? Comments, questions?
I appreciate the work that goes into this, thank you.
So the question I have is, did any, I don't see where any of those fees changed.
There was a redline copy, there were several changes, actually.
Over there?
Yeah, there was, I think you guys were sent both the redline copy and then the final agreement, or the final copy.
If we were, I didn't see that. Were there any major differences, or just?
No, there were some slight changes to some hourly rates, and we changed the mini-event rate. Currently, we do a shorter, it's not a full day, changed that, Duncan.
We also did stalls, just with the rates of shavings and everything. That was a, a big one for us. With labor and everything coming on, we couldn't discount those stalls down to that 15 number anymore. It was costing us more money than we could afford. We also did, excuse me, the, the mini-event rate day. We had one for the riding arena, didn't really have one for the Golden Spike. And so just small stuff that, that brings us in line with our competition.
Right.
Okay. Comments?
Was that motion made?
No motion yet.
Oh, okay.
Run whenever you are.
Commissioner, I just forwarded that to you, the redline copy for the future.
Okay. I'd make that motion that we approve this contract.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second with a comment.
Second, go ahead.
Appreciate you guys staying on top, especially the stalls. A lot of times, the stalls are a very sticky item, because the people like to expect them. But the cost of pine shavings and things going way up, and delivery of those pine shavings, and then also getting rid of them, it's been several years, and so I'm, I appreciate you staying on top of that.
Yeah, just with those shavings, it's actually becoming very difficult to even locate them for supplies, so it's, it's an added cost. You're right.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, well, point well taken. Yeah, if you buy shavings or deal with animals at all, we know that there's costs involved with it. And it's just, for those people that use these facilities, they should pay a reasonable fee, because if they did it at home, or they'd pay substantially more. So it's good to, it's good to have control of these, Jennifer. So we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Harvey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.